I call to order the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville. And the City Council sitting as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Railroad Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, and the Victorville Water District. First item is public comment. Anyone wishing to speak to the council, come to the podium. Seeing none, we have a closed session, some closed session items, and we have also an addendum for the closed session and the city attorney.
Mayor Cabralis, that's correct. We have seven items of closed session on the regular agenda item, plus an addendum of two closed session items for anticipated litigation pursuant to government code 54956.9c. The other items, items two through six, are all existing litigation, and the names of the parties, the case numbers that will identify directly on the agenda. Item seven is also anticipated litigation pursuant to government code 549569 subsection C. And the last item is pursuant to government code 54957B1, public employment. To the extent there is reportable action, we will come out and report that either at the close of the closed session items or prior to the commencement of the seven o'clock regular agenda.
I'll reconvene the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville. And the City Council sitting as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Railroad Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, and the Victorville Water District. The first item we have is a report from our closed session.
Thank you, Mayor Cabralis. We had closed session on seven items on the regular agenda, and then two addendum items. They're fully agendized, and pursuant to, as a result of the outcome of closed session, there is no final reportable action at this time with respect to any of those items.
Thank you. Next, we'll have the invocation. That'll be by Bishop Arlen Garcia from the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, the Victorville State. That'll be followed by a pledge of allegiance by our police chief, Cliff Reynolds.
Our dear Father in heaven, we come before you this night to give you thanks for the opportunity we'll meet here as a body to discuss matters of the Victorville city. We're grateful for this beautiful building we have a meeting. We're grateful for our mayor and council members, and all those that put forth efforts to help this city be a better place. Father, this time, we did ask that thou would bless this meeting, that we'll be able to discuss matters that are important, that'll be able to help this city go forward and be a better place. Bless the council members and all the employees, that they'll have health and strength, and will continue to serve the community. We love you so much, Father, and we're grateful for all that we have. We say these things humbly in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you. The first item on our agenda will be the public comment, and this will be for the City Council and all the authorities under the City Council. There's a three-minute limit on, as you make your, I should speak to the council, there's a three-minute limit. So at this time, we'll go into the public comment, and I do have Norm Miller.
Mayor, council members, my name is Norman Miller, and I just wanted to say that I'd like to see if there's anything the folk can maybe do about your microphones, because we have a lot, hard times sometimes hearing you. And I don't know what all the reason is, but sometimes I think it's you're talking to each other rather than the microphone, which that's something that needs to be done, or maybe the microphones aren't adequate to handle the job. Maybe you need like, a lot of times you see lapel microphones that seem to work real good, or whatever. Maybe you can look into that and see, because even though we're sitting in the back, and it's not very crowded here, sometimes it could be crowded, and people would be sitting in the back. So you know, it behooves to let them know what you're talking about, because we're only getting about half the message, and I'd like to get all of it if we can. Thank you.
Next is Dorothy Miller.
My name's Dorothy Miller. As you all well know, I have a few problems. You people are supposed to be for the people, all the people. We should all be treated the same, especially if you're running for a position. We are not treated the same. We had a little incident that one of the council members shoved one of the people to the back. The ones that they want in was up in the front. Now, that is not right. I'm sorry, and I know the whole situation, and it's not good. Then we have another council member that is sitting there, and we're backing one of the candidates. That is not quite right. I feel everybody should be treated exactly the same. And I have the little article, if anybody wants to see it, I have it, and I don't think it's right. And I hate to tell you that, but it's not getting done properly as far as I'm concerned. And all these signs that we have stuck up all over the city really looks like crap. And I'm just really fed up with it. I'm fed up with what's going on. I'm fed up with this council. They're not doing their job like they should. And we're the people. We're the ones that pay you, but we're not getting taken care of. We are not getting taken care of. And there's other things that's going on, the grand jury, the Fattick Audit, and the federal. Now, you guys know, it's going to come down. I don't know when. I hope soon, very soon, because I hope the people that has caused these problems will end up where they belong, and it's not going to be fun for them. And I've seen what's going on at Bell, and I think we're going to be looking down the same road if it keeps up the way it's going. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Raymond Herrera.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Raymond Herrera. I'm founder and president of We the People California's Crusader, and my mission statement is to stop illegal immigration in America, and also especially in the City of Victorville. I'm here to address the constituents of Victorville, and with regards to November 2nd and the elections that are coming up. I beg of you to vote and partake in democracy, but I am also asking the City of Victorville to vote out Felix Diaz from the school board. Felix Diaz is a Hispanic who's racist, whose agenda panders to illegal aliens, whose whole motive is to unseat the American people. He is slandered. He believes in the English learner classes in their curriculum. He is a man that betrays the words that come out of his mouth. This man has represented illegal aliens in the streets against Raymond Herrera. He's been in articles, in newspapers. He is the condemnation of the American culture. Literally speaking, the man has addressed the American culture as white people many times over, and people that know Felix Diaz since he was a child here in Victorville know that he's quite filled with hate and racism. But furthermore, I believe, as Plato believed, that when we go to the ballot box, that we vote for the most qualified, those that are impeccable, those whose integrity stands above the rest. Felix Diaz is a slandered man. His agenda is Hispanics. Hispanics are illegal aliens on American soil. Just to give you an idea, Felix Diaz wrote a biography, and I will read you from his book. "I wanted to be a tough man, a stud, a macho in the worst way, but was always the brunt of these sexual jokes. Some of these guys had already had sex with girls. I did not know the first thing about sex. I wanted to prove my virility more than anything in the world. We'd go to the river, pick out an individual spot, and have a masturbation contest. I always won because I wanted to prove how masculine I was."
You have 30 seconds.
This is not what a man should be doing as an adolescent or as a school board member. If he did this when he was 16, can you imagine what he's doing at this age? Can you imagine trusting your children to a man that holds masturbation contests? I say vote Felix Diaz out.
Next is Robin. I'm sorry I can't pronounce your, is it Vicstec?
Vidston, Robin Vidston. And I too am with Mr. Herrera, with We the People California's Crusader, and we've been attending school board meetings. We are great advocates for voting Felix Diaz out November 2nd from the Victor Valley Unified School District. A year ago, we initiated a campaign to stop a Spanish-language billboard in Hesperia, and Mr. Felix Diaz followed us advocating for the Spanish billboards. Now, we spend billions in this state teaching English to students, but here we had a school board member advocating for Spanish-language billboards. At the Hesperia City Council, he promoted his book, which Mr. Herrera just read from, Footprints on the Mojave, and I'm going to read a few passages as well. This is from page 154. "During my junior high years, I got into a vicious fight with Jimmy Rankin when we were in the eighth grade. I was ornery enough to be a bully." Then he talks about the fight the two had in the alley. "He actually got a couple of good licks in on me, which surprised me. That had not happened too often, especially at the hands of a white boy." Again, we have a school board member that bases issues on skin color. He also advocates for illegal aliens in the school district, as Mr. Herrera noted. And another passage I'd like to read, this is on page 169 in Felix Diaz's autobiography. "We also used to make miniature slingshots out of wire from bed springs and rubber bands. For ammunition, we used popcorn box pieces, and the more hurtful violent wire staples. I got kicked out of the Mesa Theater on several occasions for shooting at people, especially men with bald heads of the white side. I know for a fact I hurt several bald men because they would jump straight up and rub their bald heads." Again, this is a man who bases people on their skin color. And for the last passage on page 334. "From the very first date, I began to have problems at Victor Valley College."
You have 30 minutes, 30 seconds left.
Some people call it the White House, white buildings, white administrators, white walls, white employees, white board members, and a white mentality. Again, I would encourage every voter in Victorville to buy this book and read it. It is just filled with outrageous testimony as to who Felix Diaz is. And we will have flyers available if anybody would like more information. And again, we just would encourage all voters, please vote no to Felix Diaz November 2nd. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have any more cards on item number one. We'll go into the Library Board of Trustees.
By the way, just a minute. In the spirit of what Norm was saying, if you put this microphone right in front of your mouth, everybody's a different height up there at this podium, so if you put your microphone right in front of your mouth, if you just leave it where it's at, and you walk up and you're short or tall, you missed the point a little bit. Actually, some of you probably had trouble hearing Norm back there, because it wasn't squared up to his mouth. But get it right in front of your mouth, and everybody in the room can hear you then.
Move approval of the consent calendar.
Councilmember Alman, thank you.
Next, we have the Southern California Logistics Railroad Authority, and also the, after that, the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority. Both of those are chaired by Councilmember Terry Caldwell.
Thank you, Mayor Cabralis. There are no revisions to the rail authority agenda. The only item remaining is the consent calendar.
Move for approval.
Second.
That concludes the rail authority agenda. The airport authority agenda has two items. Item three is a consent calendar.
Who approve?
Item four is a request to approve an amended and restated loan agreement by and between the City of Victorville and the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority.
Chairman Caldwell, this is a companion item to item number, I believe it's item number 10 on the City Council.
With the mayor's concurrence, I'll handle that City Council item concurrent with the airport authority.
Yes.
We do have one request to speak on this item, Norm Miller.
Caldwell, council members, I just had a couple of questions about this. I've kind of seen this, I guess, from the last meeting now, but some of the things that were in the staff recommendation here, I just questioned a little bit, and one of the things that says that the properties that we're talking about were purchased from proceeds from issuance of series of bonds. How many bonds would that?
I would direct that question to our chief financial officer.
Yeah, I can answer it. It was one bond issue, specific one, specific bond issue from the airport authority. One bond issue.
Bond issue?
Correct.
So it was just one bond, not a series?
Well, it was a bond issue that had numerous bonds, but it was a one, one bond, they call it one bond issuance, basically.
Okay. The other thing is, it says in here, how much was, or it doesn't say, but how much was the bond for?
Keith, do you know what the bond, total bond of that one was? Forty-two million dollars, approximately.
Fourteen?
Forty-two million, approximately. Correct.
And it says that this was for a short-term interfund loan. What is considered a short term? Because I know when I get a loan, I have to tell them exactly how many months it's going to be for, and also how much the interest is, if there's interest.
The agreement does have an interest component, it's a LIF rate, and the agreement before you has a six-month term on it.
And has it been paid back?
It has a six-month term, be paid within six months.
From now?
Correct.
Not from five years ago?
Correct.
Because I'm thinking five years ago, it had a short term also, right? You don't consider five years short, or I don't consider five years short.
No, that's misinformation. Five years ago, there was never any loan agreement put in place.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
There was never a loan agreement put in place. It was anticipated to have a loan agreement put in place. It wasn't put in place.
So it may or may not have got paid back then?
That wasn't the question. You said five years ago, it was a short-term loan. There was no loan five years ago. It was not put in place five years ago.
I understand that. So if there was no loan was put in place, how was it going to be paid back?
Why, there's a loan agreement here to pay it back. If it been paid back, this wouldn't be on the agenda.
That makes sense. No, it doesn't to me. And I guess that's it mainly. But my only other question, is there any more items like this out in the field that we don't know about yet? This has been five years.
Since I don't know about it, I can't answer that there is or isn't. But if I discover any issues that belongs to the council attention, as a result of expenditure of funds that required a loan, or a loan that hasn't been paid back, I immediately would put this on the council agenda for an open public discussion, as we have on this one here.
Right. So we don't know if there's more of them out there then, and we won't know until?
Well, I don't know of any, or it would be on the agenda also. I can't tell you there's not, because I don't know. I wasn't here in 2005 and 2006.
Did you know about this one?
And part of my job is to find out if there are any outstanding issues, and to correct those immediately if I find them.
Did you know about this one?
No, I-
Till it coming on the agenda?
Not until it was brought to my attention. When it was brought to my attention, I immediately placed the item on the agenda.
Somebody found out about it then, and brought it to your attention.
I found out about it.
Oh. Can you find out if there's any others?
Well, I'm working on it. Give me some time.
Okay. That's all I'm asking.
It's the only card I had indicating an interest to speak. A motion would be in order on agenda item four. Second, may we vote? That concludes the airport authority agenda. Mr. Mayor? Next is the RDA. There's no revisions. We do have the consent calendar. Move approval. Item number four. This item is still, we'll start doing some, obtaining some information on it, and I believe there's- Mayor Cabralis, I would respectfully request that this item be continued. I was gone last week. Tonight, in my in-basket is a series of documents that specifically relate to this. I have not had a chance to read those documents. I don't know exactly when they were prepared, but I didn't see them in my in-basket until this evening, when I, when I got back. I have not had a chance to digest it or ask any questions. I'm simply not prepared to go forward on this item. We'll fund this until- Well, I would, I would suggest that we, I don't know how long it's going to take me to get through this stuff. I would suggest that we put it on the November agenda. Is that a, is that a motion? Move we continue it until November.
Second.
Next is the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority. No revisions. We have a consent calendar.
Move approval.
Second.
Councilmember Alman, may I get a vote from you? Thank you.
Item number four, is a request to approve the second amendment to lease agreement dated May 1, 2007, between the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority and the City of Victorville, and to authorize certain sale tower uses and subleases in Liberty and Mojave Vista Park. This is also a companion item with City Council item number nine, and we can take these both together at the same time.
Move for approval. Second.
Councilman Caldwell, may I get a vote? Thank you.
Next is the Water District agenda. We have no revisions, consent calendar.
Move for approval.
Second.
Item number four, a request to adopt resolution number VWD 10-013. This is a resolution of the Board of Directors of the Victorville Water District, transferring certain real property of the former Victorville, Victor Valley Water District and the former Baldi Mesa Water District to the improvements districts of the Victorville Water District, and formally accept said real property pursuant to government code 27281. Move adoption of resolution VWD 10013. Next is our City Council agenda. Item number three is an appeal hearing. This has been requested continuation.
Yes, the appeal hearing has been advertised, so it would be appropriate to go ahead and open the hearing, take any testimony, and then continue it.
At this time, I will open the public hearing on item number three. Anyone wishing to speak for or against item number three, please come to the podium. Anyone wishing to speak on item number three, please come to the podium. Hearing ended, I will close the public hearing.
We'll leave the public hearing open.
Leave it open, and then for the continuation.
To the date requested, yes.
Item number four- Item number four is a public hearing. This hearing is called to hear arguments for or against the Desert Gateway Specific Plan Amendment, DEV 10-00008, and the adoption of the negative declaration and the introduction of ordinance number 2265. I will now open up the public hearing on item number four. Anyone wishing to speak for or against item number four, please come to the podium. Anyone wishing to speak for or against item number four, please come to the podium. Hearing none, I will close the public hearing and ask for the ordinance to be read.
An ordinance of the city of Victorville granting DEV 10-00008, an amendment to the Desert Gateway Specific Plan to provide a resource recovery overlay district with accompanying development requirements, city of Victorville.
I'll move adoption of the notice of negative declaration, introduction of proposed Item number five is a consent calendar.
Uh huh. Councilman Rothschild, may I get a vote from you? May I get a vote from you, Councilman Rothschild?
Right. Mine's clicked.
Okay.
Everybody.
It's blank on mine, so I will click it here.
It's, I'm owning it. Yeah, right there.
Item number six is a request to authorize the processing of the attached confirming purchase order request for August 2010, as well as the handling of anticipated September 2010 billing for final payments for lawn care landscaping of high desert gardens.
Prove.
Item number six.
Did you vote, Council, or Mayor Cabralis? I'm not, did you, did you vote? It's not showing a vote for you.
I will make a motion again in a second.
Was yours a yes vote? On item number six?
Second.
It doesn't showing up. There it goes, thank you.
Item number seven is a request to amend the source provider agreement with Epic Land Solutions.
For approval?
Item number eight, request to approve the general services provider standard agreement with Busco Utility Design. Item nine, we've already voted on that, and also item number 10. Item number 11, presentation or report from city council members. Councilman, in that background?
I have nothing.
Eric?
Nothing.
I would just like to thank all our city staff, the fire, police, public works that were out there doing an outstanding job, but all the staff that participated in the spice of life. John Gargan was our chair for this year, and appreciate the work that everyone did, the committee and so on, and we need to get a letter out to all those that were in the committee and all those that participated. So, turned out to be a great event. Thank you all. And that's all I have, and we're in the meeting.
That was a good meeting.